Hello. The town of the committee of the hall. I like to call the order and welcome Mark Ruston and Jonathan McCullough. I'd like to move on for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Are there any question or discussion? No question or discussion, then I'll bring to all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Don't remind me, motion carried. I'd like to pass over the introductions of Ms. McCollum to Linda from Business Connector.
Thank you, Debbie Mary. So we have Jonathan McCullough for tonight, and I'm going to give you a brief description. The bio I found on the Cumberland Business website, Business Connector website. So Jonathan is the CEO of the Cumberland Business Connector since June of twenty seventeen. His background in business management and community economic development has been gained working in Royal Nova Scotia. He understands the challenges that business owners and managers face in running a business in a small town or rural region. Bringing people together to gain additional insight and find solutions to complex problems is something that he enjoys. Developing partnerships and collaborating with like-minded organizations and individuals has led to significant progress in the economic development initiatives throughout the Cumberland region. Jonathan credits the strong team at the Cumberland Business Connector, both board members and staff, as one of the most significant contributors to the factory's success. He received a BSc in agriculture with a major in economics from the Nova Scotia Agriculture College in Truro, Nova Scotia. He enjoys working with businesses across different business sectors and with entrepreneurs as well as established businesses. So Jonathan and I, we've worked together on various projects in the past, for more than five years now, and quite often work with each other's brains on what's going on and what everything like that. So I'd like to pass the floor over to Jonathan with a presentation for everyone here tonight.
Thank you. Just want to give a little bit of an update on the Business Connector and what we have been doing, what we're continuing to do as we move forward. So I'll start with an admission statement. The Cumberland Business Connector is a business-led, not-for-profit organization whose focus is to foster a strong business environment that strengthens Cumberland County by connecting businesses with the resources they need to be successful and removing barriers to doing business. And we have three main priorities: support businesses with zero to fifty employees, improve housing inventory, and labor and workforce development. Housing is a new one that's on our top three list now. So some of the previous support that we have provided to businesses in Oxford, that's what we'll go first, and then what our ongoing work is across the region. Business development support, workforce development, high school career barriers, workforce attraction, and housing, I'll touch on today. So one of the things that we did in this room when Ruthie Patrick and worked here at the town is we had a series of what we call supper series workshops for small businesses. So we brought in guest speakers, whether it's social media marketing, finance, or different, different subjects. We provided the pizza and looked after getting the speakers, and the town provided the roof and the space for it, and that was a very successful venture. Obviously, COVID came along and some of that stuff kind of went by the wayside for a while. We've had a number of entrepreneurship challenges. Our focus, one of our hopes is to encourage youth to consider starting a business. Even if they only do it for a couple of years, they have skills that they can take to their next job, or some of them grow their business and maybe do it for forty years. So we had four youth entrepreneurs right here in Oxford that won over the different years, as well as we did a couple of years, we did an entrepreneurship challenge for adults. And so between those, there were six winners from Oxford, and there was eight thousand eight hundred dollars in prize money given out, as well as training and business development. We provided one-on-one advice to people looking at starting a new business. We've also been asked once or twice to come into the high school and with entrepreneurship class and talk about starting a business, which we've done that in conjunction with the Community Business Development Corporation. So some of the work that's ongoing has been done in the past and continues to be done is business retention and expansion business. So going out, meeting one-on-one with businesses, seeing what their challenges are, seeing where the opportunities are, where they need to support, and maybe get direct resources. That's really the bread and butter of what we do. And it might be a business with a hundred employees or with two employees. It's, it all is important. So some of the things that come out of that, some businesses may be dealing with the work, the labor force shortage, but they can maybe address that by improving the productivity of their processes, become more efficient. So if you only have eight people who need ten, you can get the same work done. You can afford to pay people a little more because you're saving in and out by HR, recruitment, retention, it's a big, a big challenge the last five years especially. And so some businesses can help on that regard. Other times it's marketing or communication or being connected to the community services. So there's different things that we do. A lot of it is one-on-one, but then there's also times that we've worked with industries like the forestry sector within the bulk of those. We continue to work with that sector. There's lots of market for a third of the wood. There is no other market that would place that. So that's an area where we're more efficient, that we work with fifty people instead of working one-on-one. We've done the same a few years ago when there was a freeze in the blueberries and bringing some people like the COA to the table to work with the industry. The next slide, please. So as we navigate, as we work with businesses, it's a full-time job keeping up with all the programs and services and supports, et cetera, out there. So that's one of the things that we can do is we can guide people. So there's sometimes we talk to someone and they want to upgrade their website or something, or maybe digital Nova Scotia is who they should be referred to. Business wants to invest half a million dollars in putting in a new processing line. Well, I invest Nova Scotia as a rebate program that gets you twenty-five percent back under certain conditions. We can make those, those referrals, Perania or Department of Agriculture for those, for people in that industry. COA is another partner that does a lot for small businesses. So there's a lot of different resources out there, and we can help navigate businesses so that they don't have to waste the time searching for something if we know where it is. Now the next slide. One of the things we started about a year ago was what we call a business spotlight. Sylvia, but once a week, highlights a local business somewhere in the region and draws attention to it. A lot of it over the summer was recent startups, but sometimes it's a business that's been around for thirty, forty years. And what they're finding is it's helping elevate their profile in the community. And especially for the new businesses, that's very important, but even established businesses sometimes twenty minutes away, people don't know it exists. So that has been very well received, and those businesses have commented on support that they're getting, the attention they're getting because of that. So that's something we continue to do and plan to keep doing it forever. As I mentioned, the supper series workshops, what we've continued to do is to, again, with COVID, a lot of it went online for a while, but most of the time people prefer to be in person. So we often do it in person or blend of the two. But we would provide nine to twelve workshops a year for, mostly for small businesses. Sometimes we do a specific one for manufacturer groups of different, different sectors. We would tend to do these usually with what we call, under the banner of Mind Your Business Cumberland. So that's ourselves, CBDC, DAV Amherst, the county, the Chamber of Commerce. We collectively identify what we feel is the subjects that the businesses need. We put them out there, we all circulate it to our circles of influence. And this is an example of one we held in the fall about buying, if someone's interested in either buying or selling a business. It was a three-hour session for the group that wanted to buy a business. It was a three-hour session for the group that wanted to sell a business. Some very practical, sensible advice and maybe a bit of a reality check on what businesses are actually worth and what the impact is for people. So that was the example of one that we did in the fall. Our key, a key program that we have developed in-house and continue with is called the Cumberland Business Accelerator Program. It's a very in-depth support. The focus is really growth businesses that have high potential to grow. We can come in, work with them, maybe meet every three weeks, start peeling back the layers. You know, here's one problem, start addressing that. Well, then maybe there's really two underlying problems that's contributed to that, if you work on that. And a lot of it is, business people are very busy, they're wearing multiple hats, and it's really hard to be working on, like you should be thinking of for three years down the road when someone called and said today, and you have to do their job. So sometimes it's just that outside, check in that, okay, we were going to talk about this, how was that going? Let's do some more research on this, direct people, potentially resources that they can use. So we, when we're looking for businesses for our accelerator program, we want people, our focus is businesses that have the potential to grow significantly. Now, I'm at three employees today. But the biggest thing that we've done in businesses actually doing well is businesses that are willing to say, this is a priority. I will carve out a couple hours every few weeks to work on this. I will meet with you and just keep pushing it. And so who wants can accept the feedback. Because oftentimes, the gap isn't necessarily in the marketing plan or the business plan. It might be in an area that the owner doesn't have the background in or knowledge in, and so that can be addressed. So just going forward to workforce development. One of the things that we started in twenty nineteen and then we again picked it up in twenty twenty-three was getting into the high schools to talk about career opportunities. There's a lot of lack of knowledge about what is out there for employment in this region. And people often think that they have to move to Halifax or Mountain or West to get a good job. And so what we have done with these, we went into five schools so far in the past twelve months. We've brought in twenty-five, thirty businesses from different sectors. The students, there's a presentation or two, quick presentation on, you know, things to think about and look out for and job skills that are required, mostly on soft skills, the teamwork, the dependability, things like that. And then they go around and they meet with those businesses, talk to them. And like even Oxford Pross and Foods said, you know, a lot of students didn't know all the trades that they could. Think we work in Oxford Pross and Foods as an industrial technician or as a welder or as a programmer, those type of things. So it's really a way to expose young people who are starting their career with the opportunities out there and also identify the pathways from where you get from here to there. So that has been really good. We want to do that every two years. We have two more planned for the spring, and that will pay us to all seven schools in the, in, from the county. And then we're going to start back over again and keep on doing that. Bruce is, the next slide there. Owns an engineering firm, Precise Design Engineering Solutions, several locations across the Americas. He committed to attending every one of these. He bought a tool and die plant for Dean Tool and Die in Amherst. And he sees this as a key way to expose youth to the career opportunities and decent-paying jobs that are in our market. So when we look at workforce attraction, we want to encourage and support immigrants to live and settle in this area. We have twice as many people in their sixties as twenties, so we have a labor shortage because people are retiring, and there's not enough people coming in to replace them. So immigration is really, and that's both from within Canada and internationally, is really starting to fill a lot of those gaps. Some employers are fully staffed, but we're struggling before. So we want to work with groups like Y Reach. They're doing a great job in the settlement, and maybe we can be the connection where that person's spouse is looking for a job and we happen to know the company, know what it hire them. That's kind of what we see ourselves playing in that sphere. There's great community support, and, but we can maybe be the connection with businesses. The career opportunities at high schools are already talked about, and human resource practices, again, is an area where a lot of businesses don't have much experience, especially small businesses. And sometimes whether it's a workshop or one-on-one advice, we can help with that. So on housing, again, five years ago, we didn't talk about housing shortage. We had lots of affordable homes. Again, a result of out-migration for many years. That's turned around, that's great, but it's created problems. You're all aware of it. So we are working with businesses across the region, region to increase the capacity to build more houses. We're trying to identify if there's barriers that can be taken out of the way, if there are certain regulatory steps that can be streamlined, that type of thing. The municipalities are already keen to streamline things and be as efficient as possible, so that's, that's good. Things are happening. And we worked with the community college in Amherst a year ago. We did a program last spring called permanent income renter space to kind of deal with two problems. A lot of senior citizens and others are living in large homes. Income is not cheap. A lot of people could do with another source of income. So we put on a workshop where if they were interested in that, there's a, they could come to the community college with an information session. The town was there with a planner saying, if you put in a new basement suite, you know, bathroom vents have to be vented outside, you know, just some basic, like a cheat sheet for them. We have some contractors there that people could talk to, and sometimes it's just renting a room. And there was a program that the community college has where if someone says, I only want to rent to a student, they can listen on a website that is only for students. That help recruiter was also at that event too. So it was just, is it going to make a massive change? No, but it might help twenty people. Well, then, that's twenty less than beating a heart. So we're, look, we have a goal of, we help this region build capacity for seven hundred and fifty people a year. The reason that number is seven fifty is the province has a goal to double our population to twenty-sixty. Cumberland region's three percent of that. If we're going to stay at three percent, we are going to have thirty thousand more people. So that's about seven hundred and fifty a year. So if that's, there's a benchmark for us to strive towards. And right now, it looks like in the next year to eighteen months, we might actually exceed that target. So one of the things I just wanted to touch base on, come here to kind of give you an update of what we've been doing, and we would be interested if, to, again, return as a full part of supporting the business in the Oxford community, and we think we're providing value to the business community and would like to support the businesses that are here. So that's, you know, we're open to, to, if you guys wanted to think about it and chat further. For sales, other municipal partners who'd be interested in doing that. And so just like to thank you for your time.
Can I ask a question, just out of curiosity? The business accelerator program, is there any cost to the businesses for that?
No.
That's a free service.
That's a free service, and really, it's kind of a combination of a consultant and a job.
Right.
So someone that isn't just coming in, giving you a report that then sits and shoveling stuff, so you have someone that's prodding you along to actually help you.
Are there any other councillors, have any other questions? John.
What is the cost? Like if you were to come and work with Oxford or whatever the case is?
In, in the past, we have a budget agreement, and in that agreement, the town contributed ten thousand dollars a year to the Business Connector. And obviously, the larger municipalities have contributed quite a bit more, and then the province matches some of the planning. That was what it was, you know, like the last couple of years, Amherst and the county is putting inflation, the adjustment costs. So, but that's kind of probably a ballpark.
Okay.
We can't decide anything tonight. We don't take a budget type of thing and discuss it, but.
Are there any other questions? Well, if not, John, I'd like to thank you on behalf of the County Committee of the Hall for coming for your presentation. And like you said, we'd like to thank you for coming.
Well, thank you very much.
Good information, but thank you.
We'll be in touch.
We're going to move on to number four, a total of minutes, January 10th, twenty twenty-four. So moved.
Second.
Are there any errors or violations? I have a plan of minutes is ready. Five, five point two, Linda.
Oh, five point one, about public works.
Five point two, yeah.
Okay. So as I see, and I heard sirens, and my phone is in the office. I'm assuming we don't have our public work supervisor and our fire chief, which would be the next report. She can present, I don't have those printed later.
Hi, I'm three, I've got my public works ones is kind of lengthy. But I can read off the fire department one. This year is starting to get quite busy, the department has sixteen calls in January, five MDAs, three in our coverage area, two mutual aid, four medical-related calls, one in our coverage area, three in town, one structured fire in our coverage area, two chimney fires, and one in coverage, one in town, one call for power, one parking in our coverage area, and five mutually. So altogether, three in town, eight call in our coverage area, and five mutually. We had a mutual aid practice planned to be done on January eleventh, which includes spring, spring and my sister, it was a great success. Our truckport has been a metal fab for the past few weeks and is now ready to return to our station with all the repairs completed. Respectfully, another change for discretion will be change files. There's fire.
No, no questions. I'd like to thank Councilman Nutt for just the court on behalf of the fire. I'd like to move on to five point three, municipal physical activity report, APAL presented by Councilman McNutt.
So as always, that's the one technical call every Monday night at ORC, week to nine. Every last Friday of each month at the Nazarene Church is a community game night for a new day to game and facts. The Oxford Walking Club is defective, I mean, it's legal on Monday mornings at eleven and Wednesdays at six P M. It is a thirty to forty-five minute gentle walk. We are having Heritage Day event on Monday, February nineteenth. So this coming Monday, it is going to be at the arena in the warm room from two to four. Sorry, it's going to be at the arena from two to four, warm room and on ice. So we're going to be upstairs with some treats and some games and Lego and puzzle coloring and a heritage craft. And then also during two hours, there'll be on-ice skating and games and such. So it's all free to everyone who would like to come, so drop it, Uber Skating, too, that's always fun. Also, during March break, there's Connecting Cultures event. They're in the beginning stages of planning it, so not sure if it's going to be a couple of days or a whole week. It is funded through Recreation Nova Scotia. So we're looking for people, I'm just kind of going through someone else's notes here. So it's culture event. So if you have a different culture, we are looking for people to step up and help. So if you would like to present anything, sports, arts, crafts, food, music, dance, anything from your culture, it's going to be at the O R E C, and the point is to represent your culture and teach others about your culture. It's a great opportunity for Oxford to showcase all the cultures we have in our community and help bring everyone together. There will be more details coming in the next few weeks. If you would like to help out or need more information, contact Jimmy here at Town. Also looking to run an adult COVID softball league this summer. So if anybody is interested in that, please reach out to Jimmy. We're having a problem marketing any of our events. Facebook isn't as reliable as it used to be, and maybe some people aren't on it. So we're in the beginning process of looking for a digital messaging board. So we have someone coming here next week to look where it could potentially go. And this would not just be for recreation, but basically anything in the town that we wanted to promote. So for the non-Facebook users and, and things like that, it would be outside. So very beginning stages, but somebody's coming to look where to go, prices and all that fun stuff. Also, we are looking to get back into the community calendar. So we're starting in March, it'll be distributed in the mail. Please have your information sent by the twentieth of the prior month, obviously. So by February twentieth, if you have something going on in March, please let us know. It's mpal@oxfordns.ca, so it's basically Jimmy, just reach out to anybody at the town and get your information. And that is Recreation and Action.
Can I add a little plug to that calendar, just, just for the public? Part of it is going to have a reserve the date on that calendar. So if you have an event that's going to happen two months later or so after that month that we're talking about, you can reserve the date in a blog saying there's a dance going to be held at this location and more information to follow in the future. So the reserve the date is a, is a blog that we put into that calendar as well. So any upcoming events, please let us know as well.
Can we just add that we are looking for volunteers for the recreation connection? Not a lot has been going on lately, everyone's busy, and it's kind of a slow time of year, but we'd like to get some stuff going on in the town. So you can reach out to any one of us or Jimmy, and we'll get some stuff going in the spring, so.
Are there any other questions you heard in the mpal report? Hearing none, I thank, I thank you, Councilman Nutt, for presenting this report. At this time, I'd like to move on to five point four, the administration report, presented by Linda Bowe, C A L.
Thank you, Debbie Mary. So I have a couple of reports here, the administration, I'll put one of reports in. So for the admin here for the last month, water bills is the big thing, getting the whole process out. Everyone's hands were involved with that work of those water bills. Also, the flashing lights that are yellow that are supposed to be red. A lot of work has been put into those, believe it or not. The red lights should be here within the week or so. You'll probably, you'll see all of them being red, including a red light activated over here on the main street as well. So that's being worked on. There was some management trade, records management training done, a couple of our staff members took that in. Also, well, we had to download the new tax rule, so we had a presentation by a property valuation to discuss about that as well. A lot of house closing properties still being processed, so that's, that's still ongoing, it's the housing market. Also, there's been some work with our town suite with the county department. They had to get a technician involved and stuff like that to, just to look at how better to make things balance better. So they're looking at the, the GLs in exile in town suite. So that's being worked on. The AROs has been a challenge here for a small town. So we have been, a lot of research and work has been done to this AROs on all of the town assets. So to obtain estimates for cost to retire these assets if we needed to, so what are our obligations? And then following this, with those numbers having submitted to the auditors, there is an audit meeting next week, and then hopefully, if all goes well, our council meeting on February twenty-eighth, we'll be able to present the final numbers for year twenty-two, twenty-three. Currently, the manager finance has started her budget worksheet for twenty-four, twenty-five. So a lot of discussion. So a lot of discussions going on that way. There was a review done on the payment plan, the water and taxes. We compiled a list of whiteouts and receivables that should go to elections as well, so we're processing that going on. And then I'll put a plug into the elections coming up. So you're going to start hearing a lot of talk about elections, about running for council. But the first step is that we need a returning officer. This, we did put an ad out, so anyone interested to come see me at town hall, we have some information here. We'd love to talk to you, and we're hoping to have someone looked at and figured out by next Friday, by the end of next week.
So they have to be in town and, uh, do not?
No. Experience preferred in elections, yeah. And then that's all I have to report.
Are there any questions regarding the administration reports?
I just have a quick question. Have we, I think we talked before, that we are looking to emailing the water?
We have, it is quite a process, but yes.
But wouldn't it be less of a process than the process that you do to send a water?
It's a setup, it's a setup.
Right.
And there's a lot of time and stuff that goes into that right now, and there is.
A fee, isn't there? Each email we send out?
I don't know if it's a fee for each email.
I thought that's what someone told me.
But it is quite a process right now. It has been looked at, and we know that's the way it could be going. But it's not there yet.
Even home hardware doesn't.
I know.
They send out their voice, it's so much easier.
It's a sorry word, there's a lot of. The initial setup of our software wasn't, yeah, there's a lot of tweaking that needs to be done right now. We don't want to lose what we have, and we're right now trying to get everything to balance, so there's still a lot of work and data entry that needs to be done to. Right now, we're compiling the email addresses from the public and putting those into the system. So we can check off the box to email them all out, but some of them actually get manually emailed out, that have requested those rather than mail. We do have a list on the go for those as well, so. But it'd be nice to hit the button, see if the software program and set it all, I mean, yes, that would be nice.
Are there any other questions? Well, hearing none, I'd like to thank you, Linda, for sending this report, and then I'd like to move on to five point five. Criminals will solve solid waste management report presented by Linda Bowe.
Thank you. So on your desk, you'll see that there's a February one that did not make the package, but I just received it on Monday after the package was sent. So we actually have two reports that our solid waste coordinator had sent us. So the January one is attached in the council package, you can click on that online, and so that's pre-banished. So I'm going to kind of go over the February one. There's been some education enforcement work being done, because starting February first at our landfill, they're refusing any garbage that is mixed. So cardboard and plastic and bottles, they're not going to be accepting those, any bags that are not properly sorted or cleaned, that we return at the center. So there's a lot of education going on about this at the moment. They have a little contest, remarkable recycler contest, where residents are asked to send in a photo of their properly sorted material for a chance to win a twenty-five dollar gift card. So anyways, it's a fun little contest that they hold there. See here. The conics, it talks about the E P R for PPP, we had talked about that, we, every one of the municipalities opted in, not one opted out. And all that does is it brings us to the table. No one's committed any more than that, but this lets us so we can hear what's going on and have options. So just, so the steps of that process has been completed for us to be in there. And for social media, the main focus has been the recycling campaign. However, they are also posting what goes where posts and literary posts, so anyways. More exciting news to come in the near future.
I'm excited.
Yeah.
Are there any questions? Do we move on this?
I think I just want to point out, I noticed on this that their G F L reporting that there's been an improvement since they started harping about not mixing up the recyclable.
Correct.
And so it's nice to point out to the public, everybody seems to be following that, what they want.
Education is starting to work.
We can't take electronics to our transport station, right? Electronics go to the laura, but it involves and dimes.
Oh, okay, okay, so I was just going to say that down concrete, but that's not for Oxford then?
No, it's all electronics.
Do they?
Yeah.
Yeah. Are there any other questions? Well, hearing none, I'd like to thank you, Linda, for sending us this report, and we'll move on to number six. Council Canadian Board Report presented by Linda Bowe.
Okay, so I'll be presenting them all. So we're going to start with accessibility. Okay, so I reached out to the charity accessibility, because accessibility, our meetings, we were meeting regularly right up till we made a plan. We've adopted the plan as council, so now we moved to the next step of auditing all town properties, right, is where we are. So they have not had a meeting to come in and say to report minutes of, but they've been actively auditing all of our town buildings, infrastructure, like skateboard park and all those things, and compiling all this information. So we're doing our due diligence and trying to be accessible by twenty thirty. So this has been going on, so the chair of the accessibility committee has kindly put together a little report of what's been going on. So I'm just going to read this out. So she's going to give an update on the progress that the committee has accomplished during the month of January, February so far. They commenced accessibility audits for the municipal built environments at the beginning of the year, and have completed the Capitol Theater, Arena, Fire Hall, and Medical Center. They have a few we get to do before the report card deadline of March thirty-first. Unfortunately, the outside spaces will not be on the report card for March due to the seasonal approach. Because these audits are being done during the weekday, it is a challenge to have all committee members present for very understandable reasons. Having said that, they're all pitching in where they can to have this completed, so a dedicated group of volunteers may have. This has certainly been a learning experience. Joe McDonald does anticipate that because they're putting the work this year, that next year will be so much better for the committee members to complete the audits, because they have a template working. So they're looking forward to the next meeting, and hopefully with new members as well, that's for a little plug, so if you're interested in accessibility committee, there is a spot for you. So they're looking at town infrastructure, so if they saw something glaring as a non-town, wouldn't it, would they approach them? Yeah, they could write a letter, make a recommendation, and their role too is to recommend to council as well, and to advise council anything exciting or to let me know if anything alarming, and there's members there that voice their opinions, maybe they actually already have on different locations.
Yeah, there's a lot of businesses that don't have wheelchair, wheelchairs, the automatic doors or the buttons like.
And where there's a lift.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Those are things that are being addressed.
Are there any questions regarding this report, Linda? Well, if not, I can let Linda move on to the advisory board report.
Thank you. So the police advisory board met recently, and in the package, every quarter, we get a nice report and our C N P report. This was attached to the council package, it is online, also there's a link directly to just the R C N P report, so if anyone's interested in it, we go into detail and write links during these meetings, so just to let you know that is there. But a few things that were talked about at the last meeting, there's a lot of discussion regarding digital speed signs, a lot of discussion there. There's consideration to, to consider actually to recommend to council to purchase a digital speed signs. Has been a lot of discussion. And so staff have been researching to see what costs are going to be, and there was actually a recommendation from the R C N P that we're looking into regarding those speedboard signs to have involved. So during that, I'll put a little plug into myself and the team here, we actually had an opportunity to apply for a grant to see if we can cover some of the costing for these speedboards as well. So we did get it in, we're not sure if we got approved or anything on it, but just curious to see where that turned out. So we've had a lot more research done while learning about the grant.
Do they feel they were?
Yes.
I mean, they do.
Yes.
All day, spare. All the paper.
They do, because not paying attention.
And speeding has been one of the most identified issue at the police advisory board, especially on the truck roads, but all side streets even. So this could be something that, if this goes through, and council wants to go with it, and also maybe awarded a grant or something with this, the idea is to take the data, because the data does clock it on the speedboard, and compare it to this R C N Q report that shows you how much speeding is being done, right, and seeing if those numbers lower, we'd like to do a comparison. And because the whole thing is to reduce speeding to eliminate any possible collisions or fatalities and anything like that, so that's the goal.
So we'll have those costs back before budget time?
Yes, yes, we actually have some costs now, so, yeah.
And when will the? Be awarded?
A grant?
The grant is already submitted, so I'm hoping the turnover's quick, but.
Is it just for one?
We applied for two for the grant. Yeah.
And then we fight over where to put the two.
In Spring Hill, like they would put one at Junction Road Elementary for like six months, and then they take it and put it out at the West End School because they couldn't afford it.
Right.
But they do work. Yeah, so looking at those, we thought the police advisory board, where they talked, they would be a good starting point to where to decide. And all the council would have an influence too, of where to put these speedboards. The most identified, and this is just my opinion, and please correct me if I'm wrong, there's other members here, but I'm hearing a lot with Little River and Lower Main Street are two really big areas. Yeah, a school zone, and right out towards the end of Lower Main, as well as Little River Road, there's a lot of line corners.
Anywhere where it goes from eighty to fifty.
Yes, all your truck, we have five truck wrecks, right? So it's a.
And the name of the school is obviously a no-brainer, absolutely, a lot of safety issues there.
So anyways, nothing has been decided, it's just research, and a lot of good work has been put together, so I'm proud of the team that's been working with me on that, so that's really great. A lot of discussions on the flashing lights, comments that are yellow, yes, we know, they're going to be red, so that was great. Also, if, this was discussed a fair bit, a lot of, we take in customer service requests a lot here at the town hall, and quite often, some of them may be a police matter, and a matter that if it was reported right away to the R C N P, maybe something could be done quicker than bringing it to town hall to have the police advisory board bring it up to the R C N P. So we recommend if you see an issue, you know, contact your local R C N P right away, so they can open a file, and also share with us if you like, if you think it's a concern, nothing's being done, you know, but we encourage that if you see, you know, someone's running through stop signs or some, you know, some major mischief or something like that, to please contact the R C N P directly rather than us being the first response, so.
Who is, who has the jurisdiction on the parking to pick up town students at the school?
Not sure.
What's that?
The jurisdiction on that, who's being up the town students?
Well, I know about the bus rate was in and around, but I had the opportunity to pick up grandchildren this week.
Oh, congratulations.
Thank you.
It's the worst job ever.
I never saw a bigger traffic jam.
It's a.
And students walking, buses coming out, and traffic lined up two and three abreast. I do remember when the school was being built, we said that parking wasn't sufficient, and we were told that, you know, we build schools, we don't build parking lots, but that's unsafe, and there needs to be something done about that.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
So I don't know, where does it go from there?
Question, yeah, I mean, it's.
That's a school, I think that's a school board issue, I think we're going with that, it's a riot that you just are learning this now.
Well, I've been working for years for a living, so now I don't. No, but why hasn't somebody, like that, that's an accident waiting to happen, and I, you know, I'm scared for what could happen there.
Yeah, it's a range.
Well, no, I mean, there's just, there's students coming out, and I mean, everything seemed to fit into place, and cars moved through other cars and so on. But I, I would think a separate entrance and a bigger U-turn to properly navigate the crowd and everything would be much safer. And I don't know where it goes from here, but somebody has to do something, because that's an accident waiting to happen.
I mean, to contact school before we are, it's definitely a school board.
Yeah, but they're going, they're going to go back to the state almost after, I know that from the school being built.
I guess, yeah.
Oh, I know, it's crazy down there.
We're going to have to do some digging if we care already.
So can you find out where we start there and start something going on that?
Thank you.
Put in a request.
I, well, I think this is my.
Can I jump in here right quick? Speaking to wanting people to contact the R C N P directly, do you have updated hours of operation at this branch is open? I know that they were closed a couple of days a week, you couldn't get ahold of them.
I don't have those, but what happens is if you call the line, it goes to dispatch, and then they would alert in Oxford or someone in our area of the issue to talk to, yeah, they're not always at the office there.
Yeah, there's, okay.
Yeah, on the back of the street, correct?
Yes, yeah.
Are there any other questions that Linda reported regarding this report? If not, let's move on to six point three, police servicing review committee report by Linda.
Thank you. So this here, we had a placing review meeting recently, because we haven't been able to meet since we received message on our updated G E P R M request from the Minister of Justice. So we had our first meeting, and we had a representation from Curtis, I didn't say his name properly, Curtis Kamostki. He's the manager of police strategy and governance for Department of Justice. So he's stepping in until we have proper representation while we're doing a placing review. So other than, because of the G E P R M, it was done in the last five years, we were denying our request at this moment. And one of the reasons also mentioned is due to that they're doing a province-wide general duty, you know, report, a province-wide rather than a local one here. So other than what that means for us, the review, the provincial review, will introduce mechanisms of governance to the mainstream policing model management. The review may also lead to possibly de-tasking some of the things that the R C N P are doing to allow for more efficiencies. But there's nothing definite, we don't know what's, what can, these are possibilities. The province-wide review will look at provincial billing mechanism, police resource, distribution and workload, the Highway Traffic Act, highway patrol, and others. The review is in two components, there's a technical review component and an engagement committee, which Oxford could be an important stakeholder in the process. So the gentleman that was with us, Kurti Kamostki, said he would advocate, he would be our advocate during this process. So anyways, we had a good discussion and meeting there, and we're looking forward to some follow-up after next steps from that meeting, so. That's what I have to report.
Basically, everything is on hold for a few years until the province reassesses provincial policing.
Right.
So basically, they're going to look at the whole thing and.
Boy, we like reviews, don't we?
Oh, I tell you.
And since it's not, let's review, we'll create a subcommittee, we'll review that committee, and then we'll.
Anyway, we'll all go before it's all observed, but this is what the provincial, what is it, the Federation of Municipal?
N S F M or?
Yeah, they've been harping on this, wanting something done about, every community is complaining about policing and the cost, and how spread it's been in the R C P is, it's just a major concern almost everywhere in the municipality, that's why Indian issues doing what, trying to mount a committee, county and the town, have down their policing.
Are there any other questions for Linda on this report? My hearing is done, let's move on to six point four. Rose Trails Acts Committee Report by Linda.
All right, so we had that meeting, actually, it's been a week. All right, so we had that meeting actually this week. Um, we were lucky to have a presentation by, uh, Barry Burnett, who's the executive director with ATV A and S. And he is, um, very well-known in the municipal and provincial levels of government. Um, he's, uh, been very active in the, the bill that was passed, uh, for municipalities to consider bylaws to allow ATVs to, uh, on designated roads. Um, so we had a great discussion with him and, uh, the town of Oxford has led the way. They've put together, uh, a road trails designation bylaw put together. And, uh, so we're looking at their bylaw and giving it some consideration. But our next steps, we have two next steps that are gonna happen. So first, we're gonna organize a draft bylaw and put something together. But also, we're gonna organize a public meeting, um, for valuable input from all public. This meeting, I hope to have into the March community calendar, um, as well as on Facebook and everywhere else as soon as we have a date identified and location. Uh, we would encourage all that's interested in, uh, ATV, whether you're pro or con on the idea of being an ATV friendly community. Um, but, uh, this is the steps going in forward. So there are other members here of the ATV committee that maybe would like to speak on it or add more or real good. Okay, you're good. We've kind of covered the basis. So I guess that's what we have to report, just that there's a public meeting coming for valuable input. Nothing has been decided or anything, just we're looking at the idea of consideration as it is a possibility for the council to look into.
It might be, uh, important to mention what year, this year has one street that, uh, is designated ATV friendly for certain hours of the day. Uh, no, no, about thirty minutes before or.
Thirty minutes before sunrise and thirty minutes after sunset.
Yeah.
Yes.
The time after that, you're not allowed to drive.
So the act only allows riders to travel thirty minutes before sunrise and until thirty minutes after sunset at a maximum of twenty-five kilometers per hour. That is, would be enforced, so. Um, there's these, we have this information actually available at Town Hall. We have these little cards about what it is, what it's not. Please come pick them up, as well as trail etiquette, um, for ATVers as well. So, um, about using the trails.
I think some of the citizens that are concerned would be, uh, quite happy with those hours, then they really, you know. I know some people are concerned, they mean, well, I don't want to hear four wheelers going up down the street in the middle of the night. Well, they can, if they use it regularly, most.
Yeah.
There's always gonna be a few. You're never gonna shop all of them.
No, yeah. Exactly, so.
I think he also said as well, like you said, mentioned the speed, but also it has to be registered, um, in terms of.
Fully like the, to help.
And we're not saying, we're not allowing people to drive at all times as fast as they can, whatever. We're not allowing that. It's gonna happen. We're not allowing that. We're allowing the regular person, the regular Joe to go at a certain time, at a certain speed.
Get to the drive.
Legal, yeah. Yeah. But that might omit some of the dodging too, because they're, you know, right, trying to avoid that. Yeah. All right, so that's.
Are there any other questions regarding this report? So I'd like to thank you and the staff and for all the effective reports, Linda.
Thank you.
On behalf of, uh, uh, council, the whole. I'd like to move on to number seven. Items of discussion and correspondence presented by Linda.
Right. Um, I tried to pass it off, but. Go very far. Okay, so we received a, a kind, uh, email, um, from, um, a proud mom. Um, Mrs. Adams, um, she has two children who play for the Oxford Wildcats Blue Nose Baseball Teams. Uh, she has a daughter, uh, who is a two-time running provincial fourteen U girls champ and a twelve-year-old son, Ryland, I think his name, who played for the Oxford thirteen U B double A. So this, um, level that we're gonna talk about here tonight is regarding, uh, Ryland, who's the twelve-year-old son. So he is the only child in Cumberland County to have been offered this opportunity so far, and it's a great representation of not only Cumberland County, but the coaching and community of Oxford baseball. So she thanks everyone here at council tonight for considering, uh, the time and reading a sponsorship letter. So the letter is attached in the package as well as the email. Uh, so in the letter, the, um, sponsor letter is, uh, it talks about, uh, his name is Ryland Adams. He's a twelve-year-old boy who plays competitive baseball representing Cumberland County as a player for the Oxford thirteen U double A Blue Nose Provincial Team. He's a sidearm pitcher, which is not often seen in youth baseball. And also plays infield, first base and catcher during this, uh, summer of the competitive baseball. He was approached by a gentleman by the name of Dennis Woodward. Dennis Woodward is the president and founder of, uh, two thousand and eleven Baseball Canada and Grassroots Award winner. Uh, so Dennis, uh, saw him play and approached the parents to offer Ryland, uh, a chance, uh, what he says, a chance of a lifetime this coming spring of twenty twenty-four. As he selected, uh, Ryland to represent Team Canada in the fourteen U division of the Caribbean Goodwill Tournament in Amayse, Ra, Madizans, uh, Cuba. So it goes more detail inside the letter, but I just highlighted she mentioned that, uh, so if the town, uh, graciously sponsors him in the twenty twenty-four Goodwill Tour event, um, they could do so through financial sponsorship. Um, also they could donate items that, um, their participants will bring with them to the event. So we contacted, uh, deputy mayor and I talked about this a little bit today. We contacted Dennis because it'd be nice to know what they're looking for regards to sponsorship. So a small, like a town like us, um, he, he mentioned maybe a hundred or two hundred dollars that there's something to consider, so. Putting this out on the table for discussion thoughts, um, talk. However, you wanna go from there, uh, direction, I guess, to where we wanna go. Yeah.
Basically, we're, we're asking, are there any discussion on this matter? The staff will keep the direction from council as to how to respond to this request. Can we give, uh, a consensus?
I have.
To approve or not to approve this request?
With a question.
I'm not sure of this matter, but do they live in Oxford?
They live in the town.
Okay.
They play for Oxford, right.
Right. Are there any other questions before we just, I move on a little bit more on this? If there's no discussing, we're, we're gonna go back to it. What sort of asking for is a consensus before we take it to council? For either motion or vote? Just with the councillors that are here, as what you believe with a consensus for it? Like if, if you're for it, we move it forward to council. If you're not for it, if the majority of council are not for it, well, then we'll just let it lay here.
If I may, you say you're something, Kelly?
Yes.
My feeling on that is I think you're setting a very dangerous precedent because, uh, I, I think it's great and I think I don't, you know, condemn anybody for asking for support, but I don't think that's the town's place uh, to spend taxpayer money on that. And you said a dangerous precedent because you said yes to that and before you know it, there'll be thirty next month. So I would be in favor of.
Yeah, that's why we're looking for a consensus on it before we defer it to council. If, 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 if the councillors are at this time not willing to look at it, then we can leave it here. And I'm looking at it a little other time.
You mentioned bringing stuff with, you know, like.
Could we donate items, as Seth in the letter, so.
We have, do we not have, we have pins. That's what I was gonna say, town walks for pin, uh, pins.
And the, yeah, pins like that.
Yeah, we have tons of stuff with that here. Um, what about if we were to post this on our town uh, Facebook site?
Looking for sponsorship.
Yeah, we, like, you know, we just not, we don't have it all. We just posted, they contact this family or contact that individual that Dennis would like, um, spread the word. Yeah, we can spread the word for them and we can by all means give them some like promotional Oxford stuff that we have here. I think that's probably better than, you know.
Well, I think you're, you said Oxford. A lot of that's coming in.
Well, a lot of our kids go to a lot of places, you know, we should represent the, the country or the, the province or whatever, so. Yeah, we probably don't wanna get involved in that, but I think we can help out in different ways.
So what I'm saying is with the consensus of the councillors that are here, that we're not going to defer this, we're discussing, the next council meeting, if we're, if we're doing it.
And I have the correction, um, that we would promote, um, promotional material that we have, um, as in sound of Oxford pins and to post this, um, on our social media sites and the sex.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. At this time, at this time, I'm gonna ask, is there any further business discussed before I declare this meeting closed? I'd like to remind everyone that we'll be conducting a special council meeting as soon as we adjourn this meeting. So at this time, I'll now declare this meeting closed and now turn the chair over to Mayor Henry. Did you give him a special council meeting?
So with that, I might just need a two-minute recess.
A two-minute walk.
You give them a chair because, I mean, they are second in a row.
I'd like to turn it over to you a little bit. Okay, we're live. Uh, I'd like to call this a meeting, the Oxford, especially the Oxford County Council's order. Put the wrong page here. Uh, first off, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Go.
Second. Moved by councillor Jones, second by deputy mayor McDonald. All those in favor of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Carrie, uh, right now, we need a motion to go in camera. Moved by councillor McNutt, second. Stacked by councillor Canning. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, we are going in camera, folks. We will be back at the end of our little session and fill you in on, it's six forty-six.